Good evening, everyone. I'd like to now call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Deerfield, Monday, November 6th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Here.
Trustee Berg?
Here.
Trustee Jacoby?
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Sidon?
Here.
And Mayor Shapiro?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could all please stand, and I would like to have Joe Heitz lead us in the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to talk about Joe in just one second. Before we do, though, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for those who were killed and wounded and lost in Maine on October 25th, just less than a couple of weeks ago. Eighteen people were killed, thirteen people were wounded, and many more lives will be forever impacted. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Now I'd like to have the chief talk to us and recognize Joe for his accomplishments.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, by the way, Joe stood in the background. That's his tendency. That's his trend, but I think I'll ask you to step up here for a moment, Joe.
Up, Joe.
All the way up here. If you could just stand here by my side, I'd appreciate it. We're here to honor Joe Heitz for 25 years of service with the Deerfield Police Department as a telecommunicator. Began his career in that position in Franklin Park in 1991, where he served until he began his employment with the police department in October of 1998. Joe is an extremely loyal employee that pays great attention to detail, which helps make him a strong and reliable telecommunicator. During his career, Joe has undertaken numerous projects in dispatch, including law enforcement agency data systems document organization and archiving, maintaining numerous operational systems, and the overall maintenance and efficiency of the dispatch councils and other hardware. That job just got much easier with the completion of the remodeling of the dispatch center. Joe's trained in Project Lifesaver, a program developed to assist in locating lost or missing persons, and is certified in a number of federal emergency management agency courses. Joe's been recognized numerous times over the years for his poise and initiative on several critical calls. I've had numerous occasions to be in that room and watch Joe and those other dispatchers perform their duties and responsibilities, go from calm silence to someone screaming on the other line. And each and every time, for 25 years, Joe has done that with commitment and dedication to not only this community, but all those that he serves in our surrounding agencies. Mayor, I'd like to turn that over to you for a quick presentation.
Yes, and I'm going to come down there and make a presentation, but Joe, on behalf of the entire board, we want to thank you for all of your years of dedication. I can't imagine some of the stresses and some of the pressures that you would be under in that role, but it's clear that you've handled all those and more with skill and just a lot of grace. So, thank you for everything that you've done for our village. I'm going to come down.
The chief said, maybe I can say a few words, and now that that's out of the way. A few words I just said, no. But I appreciate your kind words. Bottom line is, for eight years, we've been fighting the fight to stay in here. You know, it's not by choice, it's with your support. So, I wouldn't be here without you, and we wouldn't be in the position we're in without each other. So, I appreciate everything from everybody, the village, and the board, Mayor, Chief, and even our guys. So, we're all in it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I'm always struck that when someone from the department is honored or is promoted or whatever, there are so many people that come to support and show their support. And so, for you guys, men and women back there, I can't, I don't know, thank you very much for doing that. It's terrific to see that. And I also did have the opportunity last week to look through the, walk through the new dispatch center. Really cool. It turned out to be amazing. Chief, thanks for showing me everything, and it was great.
Thanks, guys.
I'd now like to ask for a motion to accept the proclamation and recognition of Native American Heritage Month. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please. Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I now ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meetings of the September 26-23 Committee of a Hole Meeting, as well as the October 16th Board of Trustees meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurers' Report. Eric.
Thank you. This is the September 2023 Treasurers' Report. It represents 75% of the year. I have just a few highlights for tonight, as usual. Sales tax increased from last month, as well as the same period of last year. Scanned through, I didn't see anything too unusual, so I think it's just increased costs that we're seeing out there. Water and sewer billings increased. Again, that's typical this time of year. We'll see that again next month, and then we'll probably start to see that fall off as we move through the end of the rest of the year. Hotel tax reflects payments from all six hotels, as well as back payments from one hotel. So, happy to report that we're all caught up on that now. Everybody is paid up there. We also received the second installment of the Lake County property tax, as well as some of the reimbursements that you just saw at the dispatch center from the Jetsby Fund. So, there'll be more reimbursements to come, but that is functioning as we had planned there. On the expenditure side, notable expenditures in September include the construction and engineering costs for the projects going on, purchase of a salt truck, as well as some electricity bills that had been previously delayed. Large expenditures to come throughout the rest of the year include the contribution to the police pension fund, debt service payments that will be due December 1st and are transferred to the refuse fund. Those are the highlights. Any questions? I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
We'll see you again under New Business.
I'll be back for the public hearing.
I'll be back.
Bills and payroll. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jerry. Now is the time of our meeting where we offer the opportunity for public to, for the public to make a comment on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment? I do see, Arnold, that you put your name down on the list here, and I'm going to call on you, but I just want to see if there's anyone else who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item. Please, come on up. And I think you want to talk about leaves.
Yep.
All right.
I know this is a hunky topic, but I'd like to know.
If you could just maybe shift a little bit to the left.
Can you, better?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
You can move it. Yeah, there you go. How's that?
It's perfect.
Okay. I just wanted to say that, to me, it seems like the crews that are working under, out there, unsupervised because they didn't even get to our area last week. So, tomorrow is scheduled pickup. I'm going to wait and see before I make phone calls if they actually come around and pick them up, because we have piles that are at least my waist-deep that they didn't pick up last week, and we'll see if they pick it up tomorrow like we're scheduled to be.
I think you're talking to the right audience about making sure that happens.
Yeah, well, supervision might help.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
How are you feeling?
Eh.
Okay, hang in there.
I had therapy today. That's why I'm so beat.
Anyone else want to offer a public comment? All right, that takes us to our reports. Report 2376, consideration and action on the Plan Commission recommendation on the request for approval of a Class B special use for dwelling units above ground, an amendment to a commercial planned unit development to amend the previously approved second-floor plans of the 728 Waukegan Road Barnes &amp; Noble Deerfield Square Building in space, from an approved office use to a 10 residential apartment unit use, and a preliminary and final development plan for the residential use in the Deerfield Square Planned Unit Development. Ken.
The Plan Commission held a public hearing on September 28th, 2023, to consider their request to replace the previously approved second-floor plan for the 728 Waukegan Road space from 13,344 square feet of office space to 10 luxury residential apartment units. No changes are proposed for the first-floor retail use. The petitioners indicated that the change is the result of the current trend in the real estate market, that residential is more favorable and longstanding solution than office use. Amenities for the apartments will include a lobby, two elevators, including a freight elevator, three stairways, trash chute, and private balconies with glass railings. The petitioners will implement rules and regulations with respect to the items allowed on the apartment balconies. Allowable items on the balconies will include outdoor furniture and plants, while grilling will not be allowed on the balconies. Apartment tenants will have the option to park their vehicles in the main parking lot, in the rear, south of the building, or rent underground parking at 740, in the 7040 building, that's the office building. Visitor parking for the apartment units will be in the main parking lot. No changes are proposed to the signage, landscaping, stormwater management, and lighting. Following its consideration, the Plan Commission voted four to zero to recommend the proposal. In addition, the Appearance Review Commission reviewed the project at their August 28th, 2023 meeting, and voted six to one in favor of approving the project changes. Petitioner Chris Savellis, Representative Chris Savellis is with us tonight to answer your questions.
Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I'd just like to say that the proposal, we feel meets or exceeds all special use criteria. We feel that residential use up there is more viable than office in today's market, and be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to congratulate you guys on the pivot. We knew, originally it was supposed to be office, that didn't work out, and you pivoted for the residential units. So, I think all's well that ends well there, and your job well done.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Mayor?
You know, as supportive as I am of reusing this space in the best possible way, do your consultants tell you, Chris, that people would want to live in a building that's surrounded by a parking lot?
So, our research indicates that, given the fact that there's only 10 units here, remember, it's not 200 units.
Right.
Our research indicates the fact that 10 units are very leasable in that location.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, that's my only concern.
Oh, I understand the concern. We looked at that very much.
You're going to find tenants who are comfortable in that kind of a space, because basically they've got this beautiful balcony, and they're looking down at the people who are going to shop at Whole Foods.
Understood, and again, we feel, given the small number of units, that it's leasable.
Okay.
Or we wouldn't be here.
So, what is your ETA on completion, and maybe you can share with us, whatever you can share with us, what will be on the first floor or the ground-level floor?
So, we're talking to a number of restaurant coffee operators for the first floor with respect to the construction schedule on the apartments. You're looking at a nine-month build-out, probably another two months for permit drawings, another two months, so a good 12, 13 months to move-in dates.
Okay.
Nothing to announce officially on the first floor yet.
All right. Anything, any questions? All right, so I would like to ask for a motion to approve the recommendation and to ask the village attorney to prepare an ordinance.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry. Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And this is to direct the preparation of an ordinance, and then the next time, when that's ready, they'll come up, and then we'll
In two weeks.
Consider the ordinance.
In two weeks, and?
Maybe, maybe. Not quite sure, but your staff will let you know.
Staff will advise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, 2377, consideration and action on the Plan Commission's recommendation on Portillo's Restaurant's request for approval of a new digital menu board pursuant to Article 902B14A of the Deerfield zoning ordinance for their restaurant located at 700 Lake Cook Road. Ken.
Plan Commission held a public hearing on October 12th, 2023, to consider the request for a new 21.49, I love the detail, 21.49 square-foot digital menu board for its drive-through operation that would replace the current 36.64 square-foot menu board. Following its consideration, the Plan Commission voted four to zero in favor of recommending approval of the request. And I assume Representative Petitioner here.
Couple people from Portillo's are here. Do you guys want to offer anything?
It's your walk-up.
Maybe just wait one second for the lovely music to stop.
At least it's pretty.
Perhaps they prepared a little song for us.
Walk-up song.
All right, now.
I'm Rob Whitehead with Olympic Sign Company.
I'm Mike Dudzik with Portillo's Hot Dogs.
So, as it was explained, we'd like to get rid of the static display 36-square-foot menu and go to a digital 21-square-foot menu, 21.64, I believe it was, but this way it can be controlled at their corporate office from, to all the locations, and now how many are we talking about?
Digitizing.
So, they'll be, instead of manually changing them, and that's really what the goal is here, as well as we forewent the pre-sell menu board, which we originally came for, but we worked with staff to remove that, therefore just leaving us this menu board change. So, we're hoping you look for it.
Remind me how long you guys have been there?
Oh, man.
Or been here?
Five years?
No, more than that.
More than that. I gotta say, closer to eight or nine.
I wanna say seven, yeah. I could look up the date, I don't recall, they blend together.
All right, good enough, yeah.
Seven sounds right, yeah.
Questions by the board?
One of the things I always appreciate is how much we learn when we read these proposals, when we see our board packet, and this time I learned that a nit is a unit of measurement of luminance, and I thank you for educating us on
Nits.
Nits. Like that better than the foot candles with the illuminance?
Oh, I like that one. I feel like an expert now. No, it's, makes total sense. Good nits.
Well, with that comment, thank you, Mayor, for that. Anyone else? No? All right, so I will ask for a motion to accept the recommendation and to direct Steve's office to prepare an ordinance.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, guys.
And Dan, if I could mention, the Plan Commission and staff are looking at modifying our zoning codes, that all those don't need to go through a special use anymore. We're starting, this is becoming a standardization through the industry, and when we think about the Jack-in-the-Box of 1975, that's not what we're dealing with anymore, and so we will be presenting to you probably in December, with Steve's office's help, a recommendation to make these a staff approval, just because they're
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Between the screens and the light emission, all those negative impacts that we're not seeing anymore.
Right.
So, we thank these guys for going through our process now, but it's leading us to say, you know what, let's maybe do this at a different level. So, anticipate that, I'm just giving you a heads up.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you.
All business. Item 2373-1, an ordinance authorizing a special use to permit the establishment of floor and decor in excess of 30,001 square feet in an area at the Deerbrook Shopping Center, with an address of 96114 and 118 South Waukegan Road, and an amendment to the Deerbrook Shopping Center PUD.
As the board rule call, at your meeting on October 16th, we approved the report and recommendation of the Plan Commission, but also asked, suggested the Plan, Petitioner add landscape plantings to the north side of the drive to provide a barrier between vehicles and pedestrians. They have complied with that, and that's in per-plan sheet L1-0. Andrew, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to the changes that were made in response to the board's comments last time, but essentially the petitioners complied with what the board requested at the last meeting, and they have incorporated as requirements in the ordinance.
And Al is here, as you were last time, to talk about this. Anything you want to add? Nothing? Anything from the public? Nothing. Kids, maybe this is a high school project? Anything you want to add about floor and decor? All right, get your job applications in pretty soon.
Tiling the bedrooms, right.
All right. Trustee comments?
No.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to accept the ordinance as prepared.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, making an encore appearance, Eric, this will be our public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 annual budget. You want to give us a review, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Yes. Tonight's hearing was advertised in the September 21st Deerfield Review. The proposed budget was placed on file for public inspection here at Village Hall. It was also posted to the village's website. It's been discussed in detail at two committee of the Hole Meetings on September 26th and October 2nd. The proposed budget totals $59,712,3938, which is a 5.4, 1.5% increase, due largely to one-time expenditures, budget rollovers, and a general increase in the cost of pretty much everything. The operating component of the budget totals $35.8 million, which is a 6.62% increase over the 2023 operating component, again, due primarily to contractual increases in personnel services and contractual services and commodities. The difference between the total budget and the operating budget is made up of funds segregated for specific uses, one-time expenditures such as equipment purchases, transfers, and the capital budget. This year's capital budget totals $7.485 million. It's funded through available resources accumulated in the infrastructure replacement fund, home roll sales tax, infrastructure impact fee, food and beverage tax, motor fuel tax, and proceeds from the Rebuild Illinois bonds that were issued by the state. Most importantly, it is not funded with new village debt in 2024, so no new debt in 2024. Major capital projects in 2024 include the annual street rehab program, Deerfield Road and Warwick Road pumps, pump and hatch replacement, sanitary and storm sewer lining, and the salt building roof replacement. The 2024 budget is partially funded by the 2023 tax levy. We'll have a separate public hearing on that at our next public, at the November 20th board meeting. As we've discussed at the previous committee of the Hole Meetings, the village levy is proposed to increase $188,737, or 2.29%. We always like to look at the $500,000 home and what that would do. For the village portion, that's about $923 per the $500,000 home in 2024, about $20 more than last year. The final item in tonight's material is a draft of an upcoming fee resolution. We'll have the full resolution to amend the consolidated fee schedule on the November 20th board meeting. Highlights of those changes include a 4% increase in the water and sewer fund rates, 3.5% increase in the refuse user rate, an update to the water division rates, update to building permit fees, and update to the liquor licensing fees. Thanks to staff who's done quite a bit of work to get us to this point. Thanks to the board for your support, and we're here if there's any questions.
So, the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to ask for a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next thing I'd like to do is acknowledge that Seth and Amy are here from the library, and maybe Eric, you can explain the
Yep.
... relationship between the library and the village.
Yeah, so the village approves or accepts the library's budget, or the library's levy, which they have met with on, with their own board. Their levy is included in our material tonight. They have a $4,601,625 levy for their general corporate purposes, and $689,700 levy for their debt service portions.
Does that sound right to you guys? Is there any comments from the public?
Yeah, as long as Seth is here, I thought it might be nice if he just tells us what's going to happen next year. I know they're going to have a little bit of construction in the library next year, and maybe
Eric, does one of you want to step up and talk to us about your future plans?
I.
All right.
Hello. It's hard to imagine we've been in our new building now for 10 years.
Right.
Isn't that crazy? And as such, we've been in the process of refreshing some of the spaces, and you'll see those changes the next month into the 2024. It includes replacing some of our furniture, as well as creating an additional office space for more staff. So, we're excited about that. You know, our building is our biggest physical asset, and we want to take great care of it for our community.
Thanks, Bill, for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? All right, no comments from the public. Any comments from the board? Mayor?
I, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to bring it up now, but I was
It's the same.
Okay. I actually had a question earlier about the fee proposal that we were sending out in terms of our impact fees, and I thought I had found a typo, but I did not, and it just was a very interesting factoid that when we assess impact fees for the construction of new single-family homes, we assess them on the basis of how many bedrooms there are in each home. And the formula actually is higher for a four-bedroom home than a five-bedroom home, which I was unaware of. These are actually, I am told, calculated based on how many people would be living in the home, how many children, and it has been established, I guess nationwide statistically, that a five-bedroom home does not generate more people than a four-bedroom home. So, I applaud the village in calculating this as closely as we have, and, you know, having the accurate assessment in all of our fees, and the fact that this was on the impact thing caught my eye today. I just thought, I was told I should bring it up.
So, counterintuitive?
Mm-hmm.
But the fifth bedroom is typically an office?
Study.
Or a guest room, or something that doesn't generate in the study of what happens in people's homes? So, it's kind of interesting, but it, don't feel weird about bringing it up, because it's counterintuitive.
Well, it is, it is, but it's nice to know that our assessments in our codes are always It is, it is, but it's nice to know that our assessments in our codes are always tied to statistical, to fact, to accuracy. And I was impressed by that. So if I can comfort our residents and the rest of the board, that has been taken into account.
Absolutely.
I'd like to take credit for it.
I know it's you, Eric, I know it's you.
Any other comments from the board? Last call for public comment. All right, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Okay, so that's all we need. We don't need to do anything more on that.
And, Your Honor, we will have the ordinance at the next meeting approving the budget. And again, we've got, we can do two readings or one reading, whatever we choose to do, but the ordinance will be prepared.
Great.
Thanks to Steve for the next meeting.
And Eric, I don't know if you said this, but there have been no public comments, letters, emails, nothing on the budget to date, right?
Yeah, no questions other than the questions we got from the board at the committee of the whole meetings, but nothing from the public. It's been posted on the website as well as at the front desk at Village Hall here.
Okay. Item 2375, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one MT-7 trackless vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor. He said it's snows. The village plows around 30 miles sidewalks, and this is typically in and around the school areas, major thoroughfares like Waukegan Road, Lake Cook Road, Deerfield Road, et cetera. So you'll see that, you know, we plow the streets first, and we make sure those are clear, then we deploy at least one person to do sidewalks. We currently have an MT-6 sidewalk machine, which is a pretty commonly used piece of equipment. Most villages have one, if not more than one. We do have a backup piece of equipment, which is a bombardier, or bombardier, and we call that the bomb. And that's, that piece of equipment is about 30 years old. Believe it or not, it just keeps ticking. And it's a very, that machine is very messy, meaning that it just has a V-plow, and it basically just barrels through the snow and pushes it off to the side. We don't typically like to use that unless we have really heavy snow that we need to move or if we're really in a pickle. And the MT-6 machine came into play in 2013 for us. So that's about 10 years ago, believe it or not. And so the, you know, as time goes by, we need to replace pieces of equipment or at least have a backup piece of equipment. And the bombardier, or bombardier, is now something that we want to retire after 30 years. And so we're wanting to purchase a new MT-7 machine. The MT-7 is roughly, if you looked at that and the MT-6 side by side, they're relatively the same piece of equipment. The MT-7 is outfitted with a separate drive, which allows it to be a multi-platform piece of equipment, allows it to do other, to perform other functions, though snow removal is the primary function. The other functions include mowing, so we could use a boom mower, a deck mower. We could use a sidewalk planer, cold planer. There's other pieces of equipment that are attachments for this, for this MT-7. However, we're proposing right now just to purchase the MT-7 as is. We do have a V-plow and coming along with it if approved. And then we have, at least we have two blowers right now, so the blowers would be, are interchangeable. And we have a broom. We like to use a broom on occasion when we have smaller, you know, lesser snowfalls, eight inches and a half, two inches of snow. But yeah, this this piece of equipment has been, has been added to the VERF. The the MT-6 was VERFed for over that 10-year period. We have about $100,000 in the VERF account for that. It is short by about $59,000, but we do have a proposal for next year's budget to have this as part of the next year's budget expenditure. So we're proposing it for next year. If approved, we don't think we'll see the piece of equipment until next year at least. So, and hopefully we'll see it for the back end of the snow season, of the 2324 snow season. With that, looking for approval by the village board for the purchase of the MT-7 machine, and the purchase price is $159,687. The vendor is EJ Equipment, and that's the same vendor that we purchased from last time. Incidentally, this is not a piece of equipment that we can purchase through competitive bidding. There is one vendor for this piece of equipment, as goes with most pieces of equipment of this type, and the vendor is EJ Equipment, once again, making the request to make that purchase.
Now, are you retiring the other?
The bomb.
So the bomb, the bomb will be retired. Probably, all likelihood, we'll probably keep that because it's not really worth any trade-in value. And then the MT-6 will be a piece of equipment that we keep and we use regularly along with the MT-7. So depending on staff availability, we may put both pieces of equipment out at the same time. We may put one piece of equipment out, but at least, you know, it is a practice of ours to have, to have some sort of redundancy in our system, and this follows along with that. So at least having two pieces of equipment, if one goes down, we have another one to fall back on. And, you know, these pieces of equipment can be a little temperamental. The parts are from Canada. So, you know, we've learned having the MT-6 that we stock a certain, certain wear parts and things that typically go bad with the piece of equipment. But, you know, there's a learning process involved with it, and if something major goes wrong with it, we're requesting something to be sent down from Canada in short, in short order, that that sometimes doesn't work out that well for us.
Will you be able to do more with this because it's got a higher functionality than the bomb?
It does have, it is a multi-platform machine. We are, with this price, we are purchasing the deep-reduction V-drive, which is, which allows us to to add extra attachments to it. So as I mentioned, the cold planer, the deck mower, the boom mower. There are a lot of different attachments that come along with, that you can purchase with it. Of course, each one comes with its separate price. So we're right now just requesting the purchase of a piece of equipment just for snow removal.
I would imagine back in the day, the bomb was a blast to work with.
I mean, it does go very fast.
Yeah.
The guys, the guys, those who have used it, they think it's a fun piece of equipment to use, but
The problem was it puts the snow back in people's driveways after they've cleared their driveways. That's the practical piece of it.
There's no precision to it.
Right. Yeah, the MT-7 and the MT-6 with the blower, you know, you can directionally, you know, blow the snow where you want to.
You can aim it.
Do a dumpster into the back of a truck. Sometimes people don't like where we put the snow, but, you know,
Have to go someplace.
The more experienced the driver gets, the better, the less complaints we get about where the snow is thrown.
Right.
So.
Questions, other questions from the board or the public? Yes, sir. If you wouldn't mind just coming forward so we can hear you? And then just please state your name.
Sure. My name's Chris Mazurk, and I actually have the Red Barn complex over by the Woodview Apartments.
Okay.
And I've actually been plowing the sidewalk from the Woodview apartment all the way to Caruso School because that seems, section always seems to be left out one way or the other. So I don't know with this having more capacity, if there's an opportunity to get to the Woodview Apartments because I know there's kids that go to school in Caruso and things like that, so.
It's a great request. That's Lake County. That's not Village Walkway, by the way. Bob, I don't know if we've ever dealt with that request before. We probably have.
I've never heard of that request before, but we'll think, we can look into it and definitely get an answer back to you. Ken, you're right, that is Lake County. And so it's not something that we typically would get involved in, but
But obviously, it serves our
Forum to make that request.
Yeah.
So we'll look into it. If you want to exchange contact information with me later, we can, you can go ahead and I can give you a call back, and we can figure something out.
Unless from a fitness standpoint, you want to keep doing it.
Well, beef with a snowplow on it, so. The concern, though, is you go over the tollway, and you want to make sure you're not putting it on the tollway. So I certainly am aware of the dangers of it and things like that, but I know between the apartment, I'm assuming being Deerfield, correct?
Apartments are in Deerfield. It's the pathway that's not, that's the challenge. We've got to deal with overcoming a jurisdictional responsibility issue and the liability for that. That's a stupid legal thing that we're going to deal with. But let's have, we'll have a conversation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? All right, I would ask for a motion to accept the resolution authorizing the purchase of a MT-7 trackless vehicle.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2378, resolution authorizing the purchase of water meters from Midwest Meter, Inc.
So we have been purchasing water meters from Midwest Meter for quite some time. I don't know how many years, but I would venture to guess 25, 30 years. All of the the meters within the village, minus about 2%, are Badger meters supplied by Midwest. We do have some, that extra 2% is, are meters that we're looking to retire and take out of the system and replace with Badger meters. But this, this purchase is a budgeted purchase that we make every year. They have some minor cost increases each year just based on the consumer price index, price of brass, et cetera. And so we did budget $100,000 for the purchase of meters in 2023. We haven't requested that expenditure from the village board yet, but we are tonight. And in this purchase, typically, a lot of these meters are purchased for new homes or for additions, et cetera. And then it's a pass-through. So we purchase the meter, and then we sell the meter to, to like a contractor or somebody else who wants to put that meter inside a home. So there's a revenue side that Eric sees on on this. A portion of these meters are reserved for commercial meter replacements, and that's that 2% that I mentioned. So we did put some test meters out on the system that haven't worked out that well for us, and we're wanting to replace those, and those are all, basically all on commercial, on commercial properties. So with that, I'm requesting the $90,000 that is budgeted in 2023 to purchase meters from Midwest Meter Incorporated.
Comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board? All of the meters that we wanted for the entire village that was a routine replacement, those are all done, aren't they now?
So we, so we've recently replaced the meter heads and the meters. The meters were about 10 years ago, and we've replaced some meters, some random meters throughout the system. But more recently, the meter head replacement project, I think is what you're referring to, is the replacement of the plastic heads that snap on the top of the meter head. And that's, that's, that's the portion of the meter that actually does the reading.
This is the entire meter?
Yeah, this is the entire meter. This is the entire brass meter. And then these, this also includes the purchase of meter heads. So it's meters, meter heads, meter fittings, and anything associated with meters that comes through Midwest Meter, basically.
And I think, Bill, just to elaborate, you may remember some of the commercial meters were not available, supply chain issues, whatnot. We couldn't, we couldn't fix them, right? We couldn't get replacements. And that's, that we're trying to catch up, and that's largely the residential program has been completed.
Yes, so, yes, I think we have about 40, maybe less than 40 commercial meters to replace. We've got about 15, 10 or 15 residential meters, and those are homes that are, you know, on the market, they're for sale, or they're bank-owned. There's a few out there that are, you know, meters that need to be replaced that we haven't
But this would take care of all those?
It should take care of most. And then next year, you know, we'll request again.
More again.
Typically, we have, you know, we spend $100,000 or so on just the purchase of meters. And that, and as I mentioned, that's, you know, part of, you know, residential reconstruction, new construction. And that's a pass-through, basically.
So if somebody builds a new home that requires a different-sized meter, they have to purchase that as part of that project. But if we're replacing something in a commercial facility or a residential facility that's the same size, then that's our responsibility because they paid for it the first time. So it's just about continuing to stay caught up with that.
And you may recall that, she was probably two years ago, we instituted a price or a, an annual or a monthly fee that goes with the water bill, and that fee goes into a separate account. It's similar to a VERF account for meter purchases. So in 15 years, in theory, we should have money put away to replace all the meters, the meter bodies at this, at that point in time. And so there's
Will need to be replaced in 15 years.
Exactly.
That's the intention.
Yeah.
With that, I'm requesting the purchase of $90,000 worth of meters from Midwest Meter.
I move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I'm going to take the appointments now and then items for discussion after that. There are a number of reappointments to boards and commissions that I'd like to make, and I'm going to read these names and then ask for a motion to reappoint everyone that I've suggested. So reappointments, Rick Hyten to the Board of Police Commissioners for a three-year term, Mark Horn to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term, Susie Wexler, Community Relations Commission Chairman for a three-year term, Philip Bedeker, Family Days for a three-year term, Michael Butera, Family Days Commission for a three-year term, Kenneth Stolman, Plant Commission for a three-year term, Jennifer Goldstone, Plant Commission for a three-year term, Kara, help me?
Claudia.
Thank you.
Kara K.
Kara K. to the Sustainability Commission for a three-year term, Richard Heller, Sustainability Commission for a three-year term, Deborah Thomas to the Sustainability Commission for a three-year term, and Lori Burke to the Voluntary Engagement Commission for a three-year term. Do I have a motion to reappoint these individuals?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
You a second.
Oh, sorry, Mary, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Items for discussion by the mayor and board of trustees. Couple of items, and then I have a statement I'd like to read. On November 19th at 3 o'clock at the First Press Church across from Village Hall will be an ecumenical service. And I encourage that, as well as the other things I'm going to mention for everyone, including our board to go to and to join and participate in. We're going to have a board and commissions reception on December 3rd from 3 to 6 at the, what's it called?
Solarium.
Solarium, at 570 Lake Cook Road. And there's also the Northwest Municipal Holiday Party, which I think everyone's been invited to, which I would again encourage people who can go to please go. That's at the Chateau Ritz from 6 to 8 p.m. on December 13th. And I'm sure there's going to be more stuff coming, so I really encourage whoever can go to any of these or all of these, please do so. I now would like to read a statement, and then I'll ask if there are any trustee comments. Recently, there have been a series of anti-Semitic attacks targeting the Jewish community, anti, in anti, sorry, targeting the Jewish community. Anti-Semitic incidents in the United States are at the highest level recorded in nearly 50 years. Since October 7th, the Anti-Defamation League, the ADL, has recorded a significant spike in anti-Semitic incidents across the United States. The reported incidence of harassment, vandalism, and assault has increased by 388% over the same time period last year. The ADL recorded a total of 312 anti-Semitic incidents between October 7th and October 23rd alone, 190 of which were directly linked to the war in Israel and Gaza. The ADL also recorded nearly a 1,000% increase in the daily average of violent messages mentioning Jews in Israel in white supremacist and right-wing extremist channels on the messaging platform Telegram in the days following the massacre in Israel. We see these incidents happen in our college campuses, in communities throughout the country. I'm lucky. I have never been subject to antisemitism, nor has my wife, nor have my kids. I am, however, keenly aware of it. You see, my grandparents immigrated from the United States from a small town in Minsk, which is now in the country of Belarus. It was a town like that that was ravaged by the Russian Cossacks during the pogroms simply because they were Jewish. My dad graduated medical school about 70 years ago and was denied hospital privileges simply because he was Jewish. My mother was told she was a dirty Jew and had a faith that was too Jewish, quote-unquote, "too Jewish." She was isolated and had few friends. These are examples, and though not the same as what's happening today, These are examples, and though not the same as what's happening today, are eerily similar to what is happening today. Hate is not isolated to anti-Semitism. It extends to racism, homophobia, Islamophobia, and many other areas where people are targets or unnecessarily marginalized for who they are or what they believe. Our children deserve to live in a community that is safe, kind, inclusive, welcoming, and free from hate. Hate of all kinds has no place in this village. It has no place anywhere. We must call it out and douse the flames of hate that once were mere embers. Thank you. Any other comments, any comments whatsoever from our board? Folks to the right? Folks to the left? No comments? All right. I will now ask, Kent, do we have anything from you?
I have nothing from me, and would request a motion to go into executive closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C1.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Sidon?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll go into executive session, and other, other than adjourning our meeting, we will have no business when we come back out into open session.